Now.
Welcome, everybody. Just a minute, let me get my computer right. Just okay there. Hope everyone can hear me. Uh, welcome, everyone. I like to call the regular meeting of the KC RHA Governing Committee to order. And of course, we start by grounding our work in our theory of change, which is if we create a homeless response system that centers people with lived experience, then we will be able to focus on responding to the needs and eliminating inequities in order to end homelessness for all. This, of course, is a hybrid meeting as are all of our meetings. So there is a physical location as well as virtual access. Our in-person location is at Seattle City Hall. So before we begin, Austin, I'd like you to please take the role.
Absolutely, Chair. Member Backus?
I'm here.
Member Balducci?
Here.
Member Barone?
Here.
Member Bernie?
Here.
Member Constantine?
And then Braddock here on behalf of member Constantine.
Noted. Member Green?
Here.
Chair Harold?
Here.
Member McQuarter Jr.? Member Moore?
Here.
Member Nelson?
Present.
Member Prince? Member Salsedo? Chair, we have Quorum with nine.
Very good. I heard you asked for member Salsedo. Did she say affirmatively here? I didn't hear anything on my end.
No, no.
Okay, so we have nine. Very good. So, uh, let's do a land acknowledgement as the script calls for. We acknowledge that King County is located on the unceded traditional land of the Coast Salish peoples. We honor this land and its people, past and present, and we are committed to directing funding and resources to organizations led by and in support of native and indigenous people. Okay. I also wanted to say off-script was, uh, actually governing committee member Roosevelt McQuarter was scheduled to chair this meeting, but he had a personal commitment and couldn't make it. I chatted with him last week and we wish him well, and so that's why it's sort of the default to the chairing this meeting. So before we, uh, I think we all know why we're here, to look at the potential of a new CEO. But before we move to vote or move into executive session to discuss qualifications, I'd like to make a I'd like to propose an amendment to the agenda to invite three members of the Implementation Board to speak to Dr. Kennison's qualification. Uh, that'd be Ben Maritz, Paula Carvalho, and Christopher Ross. These three members of the Implementation Board have served diligently on the CEO Hiring Advisory Committee. I think I need someone to go on mute, by the way. Of the CEO Hiring Advisory Committee, representing their fellow board members and dedicated significant time and energy to get us to this point, and their perspective and shared here is invaluable, and I want to thank them for their service. And so I know, we all know that they did vote, uh, the majority to move on uh, the candidate Kelly Kennison to the Governing Committee, but that's just a vote. We thought it appropriate to hear some of their own words as to why they voted the way they do. So I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to invite Ben, Paul, and Christopher to speak. Is there a motion that can be made?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Uh, I like the first-name basis. Feels good. Let's form. Uh, Austin, will you please take a roll call on the vote, please?
Uh, to amend the agenda? Um, Member Backus?
Aye.
Member Balducci?
Aye.
Member Barone?
Aye.
Member Bernie? Member Bernie?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Member Braddock?
Aye.
Member Green?
Aye.
Chair Harold?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
And member Nelson?
Aye.
Chair, all passed. Good answer.
Okay, very good. So I'm not gonna call the order of the Implementation Board members. Uh, let's try to keep it within two minutes of speaker if we can, and I'll just chair it over to turn it over to Implementation Board members, and please proceed, all three of you. I assume that you are following it, and it is your time to speak. Please proceed.
Awesome. I am up first and the got a little jinx because the power just went out. Um, so I'm just here to talk a little bit about the process that the Implementation Board, um, Christopher, Ben, and myself have done as part of the Implementation Board and as well as bringing in, um, different members of the Governing Committee. Um, I think the process, you know, working alongside NPAG was holistic. We brought in lived experience, um, providers, philanthropy, diversity, and representation. Um, we believe, you know, and we all committed that we would continue down this process if we felt that we had the right candidate. Um, we wholeheartedly believe in, um, in the candidacy of Dr. Kennison and what she will bring to this role, um, but also continue to believe that she will be the right leader to steer us in this regional approach, um, and that we need to do right for those who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our region. Um, and so want to push forward and encourage the Governing Committee to, um, to appoint, uh, Dr. Kennison for this role. And I will stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Carvallo. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, Christopher Ross here. Um, also having a little bit of power outage, so that's why I moved my phone, but I do want to share some comments. When we started this search, we were looking for a leader who we knew needed to be highly relational, visionary, uh, strategic in their approach, be an accomplished administrator, and someone who is adept at building and supporting a high-performing, high-impact team. But most importantly, we really were looking for a leader who believes that homelessness can be solved and that the transformational power of a regional approach was the right approach. And in Dr. Kennison, we found that, um, exact leader. Uh, Dr. Kennison brings both compelling track record of leading high-performing teams through transition, which will definitely be, um, important. She brings a strong research and data-focused orientation that uses informed best practices surrounding issues of youth, family, vulnerable populations, and homelessness. She's also built and managed diverse teams and blending a human-first approach, one that centers on results. And in Dr. Kennison, I believe that we have both what our clients need, what the, um, our providers is the best provider and support leadership for our staff, and also what the region deserves in the next leader in the KC RHA, a leader who's committed to both the regional approach and honoring the really deep foundational work that so many have contributed to get us to this point. So with that, I am proud to have also voted yes for Dr. Kennison.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thanks for your words and your work. Yes, uh, you too, Ms. Carvallo. Thanks for your words and your work, and I guess our last speaker will be Ben Maritz.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Ben Maritz here. As volunteer members of the Implementation Board, a lot of what we spend our time doing is speaking to community members, service providers, and, uh, people who have lived experience in homelessness about what they're looking for from the authority. And the overwhelming thing we hear as related to the CEO search is a request that we bring in a permanent leader for the organization now. That call has absolutely been echoed by the staff within the organization as well. It's been a year since there's been a permanent CEO for the authority. And, uh, it is, there's a, a strong feeling that not only is Dr. Kennison the right leader, she's the right leader for the moment. We, uh, have significant challenges. As you all know, the incidence of homelessness has increased significantly. We have a 20% increase in the number of unsheltered people in our community over the last two years. Uh, we have to think hard now about some of the long-term strategy, governance, and execution issues that the organization faces. It's our strong opinion that doing those har- hard things will be easier if we have a permanent CEO in place, and it's our recommendation that we appoint Dr. Kennison, uh, now. So thank you very much for considering, uh, this. We are happy to now submit this to your decision.
Thank you too, Mr. Maritz, for your words and your work. Thank all of you members. Okay, so at this point in the process, we are going to move into executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two-point-three-oh-point-one-one-zero, subparenthesis G, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment for approximately twenty minutes. Extends that beyond that period, we'll ask for an extension. We'll be back at five-thirty-five. Let's give us quite, I'm gonna say five-forty, as we started late, five-forty, to hold a vote on Resolution twenty-twenty-four-dash-eleven. Unless there's any objection, we'll move into executive session.
Can somebody let us know how we do that? How do we supposed to do that?
No, I, I just said it and s- and s- and I'm staring here like it's just supposed to magically happen.
I put the, uh, Microsoft Teams link in chat, uh, for you all, hosts and panelists, as well as it should be in your inbox if you, uh, that as well, so.
Okay, I'll make sure we're on there. Don't panic if you're not on there. We'll figure it out, so. You wanna, did everyone understand that? Any questions on how to get there? We're good?
You want us to leave this meeting, though, right? Yes.
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 Right.
Recording in.
President Nelson, I think you need to pop out of this.
I know, I, I know. I wasn't gonna do that until I was sure I was in the other.
All right.
And the members of the public online, we are coming back.
I'm here, but my video is not working now.
Okay, Austin, I'll let you tell me when I have a form, Austin.
Yep, I am keeping track right now.
Bruce, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. But my video is not working now.
We are at six and nine right now.
Austin, you said I do not have a form, correct? You said I'm six.
Yeah, we are at six of nine, seven of nine.
Thank you. You're in your A game, Austin.
Eight of nine. And. Councilmember Moore, do you hear us?
I am here, thank you.
All right, yep, that is all nine, Chair.
Okay, um, am I actually in the meeting now to resume, or do I have to, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so we're now going to move on to our next order of business, which is voting on Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven confirming Dr. Kelly Kinnison, Ph.D., to serve as the next CEO of the KC RHA. Uh, the, the procedure that I like to employ will be that I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolution. I'll ask for a second and then we'll actually vote. And then because of constraints on time, I'll ask for people to make comments right after the vote, and that seems to be an acceptable procedure. So having said that, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven?
Mr. Chair, this is Bacchus. I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven.
This is Bernie, I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, Austin, will you please take a roll call vote?
Absolutely, Chair. Member Bacchus.
Aye.
Member Balducci.
Aye.
Member Barone.
Aye.
Member Bernie.
Aye.
Member Constantine?
Aye.
Or Bradda?
On behalf of member Constantine, Shannon Bradda.
Member Green.
Yes.
Chair Harold.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Abstain.
And finally, member Nelson.
Aye.
Chair, the resolution passes with eight ayes and one abstention.
Thank you very much. A job well done. I'd like to hear a few comments on either why you voted, if you so choose, but I'm gonna call on Mayor Bacchus, who I believe has a time constraint. Was it Mayor Bacchus or was it, uh, Councilmember Balducci? I can't remember the call. Mayor Bacchus, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is an honor to, uh, make the motion to have Dr. Kinnison as the next CEO for KC RHA. I had the opportunity to speak with her on Friday and found her to be very refreshing in her uh, position and in her perspectives on homelessness, how to work with the service providers as well as government, how to work the politics, uh, in this area and not necessarily have to, as I like to say, lead by, uh, press conference. I do believe that she is interested in rolling her sleeves up and getting, getting busy to help us resolve homelessness in this region, and I look forward to working with her and supporting her in that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bacchus. Thank you for your work, too. Uh, are there any other comments that any members of the governing committee would like to make at this time regarding the resolution? Uh, Councilmember Moore, I see your hand.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Chair. Um, so yes, I abstained today, and I just want the record to be clear that I came to this decision not because of the candidate in front of us who possesses very impressive qualifications, but rather because of the process that has led us here. Since March, I have consistently called for a pause on the CEO search because I believe we are putting the cart before the horse. Given the myriad challenges facing KC RHA and the uncertainty that all the necessary parties can reach consensus on how best to structure the governance entity and balance local needs and perspectives within a regional structure. I am reluctant to bring on a fourth CEO until we have a consensus on structure, vision, and responsibility. This work, in my opinion, can proceed expeditiously without harm to the ongoing work of the agency. And I believe that we owe it to the staff and the community to get it right this time. So those are the reasons why I abstained today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I see your hand. Uh, Governing Committee member, Mr. Lamont Green.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. My apologies that I'm off camera and also in my vehicle. Uh, but first, I would just like to thank interim CEO Powell for his willingness to serve in the time that he has and, uh, his willingness to partner with people most impacted by homelessness with transparency, accountability, and integrity. It has truly been refreshing. Uh, I'm voting yes because people with lived and living experience of houselessness, who I am accountable to, believe that King County Regional Homeless Authority needs servant leadership and stabilization. We are hopeful that Dr. Kelly Kinnison will authentically partner with the lived experience coalition, COC Board, and groups throughout the region led by people with lived and living experience of houselessness, especially given her role in developing the first portfolio of research to show how engaging people with lived experience can improve federal research, policy, and practice. But our concerns remain that the stabilization of King County Regional Homeless Authority should not come at the cost of innovation, that we must begin using an equity-based decision-making framework as called out in the ILA so that our policy, funding, and programmatic decisions are driven by data, evidence, and what people most impacted will utilize instead of fluctuating political dynamics that could harm progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green, for your words. Uh, Councilmember Jorge Barone.
Thank you, Mayor Harold. Um, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody who participated in this, uh, search process, uh, the opportunity to, uh, to serve on the search committee, uh, at least the, the second half of the work that they've done, and I just want to, uh, appreciate all the work that, uh, folks did both at KC RHA and our consultant to help us get to this, uh, point. Uh, I'm, I'm pleased to, uh, uh, have voted in favor of Dr. Kinnison's, uh, appointment. Uh, we know that homelessness doesn't exist in a vacuum, and Dr. Kinnison's deep knowledge of the many overlapping systems of care in our social safety net will be a benefit towards our region's ability to move forward with the multidisciplinary approach needed to address homelessness at scale. Uh, I particularly appreciate that she's got extensive experience in program evaluation and data-driven interventions, which I think will be a critical resource as we assess and implement the most effective, sustainable interventions to address this crisis. And I want to acknowledge, uh, what we've heard from, from, uh, folks about how Dr. Kinnison alone will not be able to fix the structural challenges we currently see in the, in the agency. But I'm confident that she will provide ste- steady leadership, uh, much-needed staff support, and a strategic vision as we advance, uh, these conversations. Uh, as board members and, and committee members, it is incumbent upon us to commit to bettering the agency, and I'm look forward to the conversations to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, um, don't see any other hands up. Uh, Councilmember Nelson, Sarah Nelson, please.
Thank you very much. I, I share Councilmember Moore's sentiments that there is a widespread desire to make some significant changes in the organization and, and bringing on a CEO before that is done is perhaps, um, you know, i- it is not ideal, let's say, and that was echoed, not echoed necessarily, but that was also said by the, a- as reported by, um, our partners in, um, the philanthropic and the, um, and the business community, uh, that, that we do need to make changes, and so let's bring on somebody, uh, permanently after we have done that. However, I voted yes because this organization needs stability, and we cannot get there. We cannot make these changes without having a stable leader. And I was able to speak with, with Dr. Kinnison just before this meeting, and one thing that she emphasized about her strengths was program evaluation. And that's exactly what I needed to hear because we cannot keep doing the same old thing with, uh, a- and, um, uh, without really seriously looking at whether or not it's working to help the people out there living on the streets of our city and our region. And that is, um, and that was the signal that I needed, that somebody who might be willing to really dig down into the, um, whether or not what we're doing is working, look at the, uh, the services that we're contracting for, and make sure that we are fulfilling the mission of the organization. So that is why I voted yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. Did any other comments or hands raised that I do not see? Please, I'll, I'll wait for a moment. Let's see everyone here. Any other comments? I'll close this off on some comments unless I hear anyone in the next few seconds. Can't find my script. Okay, not seeing anyone jumping to the microphone, so to speak. Uh, I want to thank everyone in the Governing Committee and Implementation Board and on the, um, the search firm that was used. I actually believe Dr. Kinnison, who again holds a PhD in Community and Prevention Research from the University of Illinois, and holds a BA and an MA in Psychology that has a background, I think, in being a, a expert in family and community policy and, um, in behavior, uh, which is becomes behavior, a study that becomes critical in this work that we're doing together. I have a sense of urgency on working with the philanthropic community and working with the employees at the RHA to stabilize us and to, to create an organization that's high-performing. I think the work now, uh, belongs with us as well, that we have to work collaboratively, and we have to work quickly and boldly to look at the governance issues, to look at even the morale issues in the organization, look at the lived experience coalitions, see, uh, the, 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 how can we truly come together collaboratively, listening to all voices, and getting people sheltered? This is our opportunity, and so I didn't want to do things sequentially. I didn't want to pause the search. I want to move forward, and I'm very confident we have a person that can take the helm and, um, and do what needs to be done. So I want to thank all of your considerable insight and work into this decision, and we're ready to move forward. And so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Uh, you guys, you guys want to keep meeting, I see. I'll just do this by voice for it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Host, guys, have it. And again, thank you all for coming to this special meeting, and everyone have a blessed evening. Thank you very much for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.